And we are recording.
Great, all right, Happy New Year, and I guess we don't have anybody from the public here, but it's just us, and the first thing we need to do is the reorganization. So I'd like to hear nominations for Chair and Vice Chair for this year. Do we have any nominations? Anybody?
Like Tom's trying to talk.
Yeah, Tom, you're muted.
I nominate Judy for Chair and Greg for Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
Anybody else? All right, do we have a vote? All in favor?
I.
I.
Okay, you got it, same old, same old.
We're regular.
All right, we need to review the December meeting minutes. Does anybody have any corrections or comments on those?
I thought they were very thorough.
Yes.
I move that they be adopted unless anybody else has comments.
I'll second.
They were very good, because that was a tough meeting. Good cover.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
I.
All right, and there's no presentations or public comments right now. So our, well, our next meeting is on Thursday. We have a joint meeting with Doylestown Borough, and we're going to be going over to 280 North Broad Street. So that, you know, I talked to Gus on Sunday about that, and I guess the borough's concerns are mainly with traffic and density, and they don't see how the numbers are going to work, but that's not really our issue. But the traffic is a big one, and they're going to be asking for a traffic study. But we, they would, they asked us to set up and host that meeting to start it out, and then, so I can do that, and then it'll be open for discussion with the developers. So does anybody have any thoughts on that, or anything that they want to bring to, you know, discuss before that meeting?
Have we notified any of the neighbors yet on that?
Yeah, that's all in the borough, we have one neighbor on that, the rest are in the borough, and we've been there, and there's been, there have been two articles, one in the Intel and one in the Bucks County Herald about it, all referencing tomorrow's meeting, or not tomorrow, but Thursday's meeting, excuse me. And tomorrow Margaret will be sending an email, late today, Red is leaving, the developer sent over like a PowerPoint and some attachments. So those will go out tomorrow, along with, Karen Highland found the traffic, or I guess the Broad Street Corridor Study from 2000. And so that is going to be sent as well. And I had asked them about the Intel and Calkins, and if they had any information, and like traffic information, current counts, things like that. So they, she sent that to me as well. So Margaret will put that out tomorrow morning and get that over to you first thing, so you guys can spend tomorrow and Wednesday prepping for Thursday.
Those 2000 studies, when were the apartments, like the tower, when were those things put in? I mean, it's in the borough, but.
Center Square Towers goes back to probably the 60s or 70s, as does Heritage, right Judy?
Um, late 70s.
Is there like, okay, I was like, is there a timeline between like Lantern Hill being put in, and then Heritage Towers? And then, I was just curious.
Yeah, Center Square Tower and Wesley were in in like late 70s, early 80s, I think Wesley possibly. The CarTech site was an industrial site, which is where Lantern Hill is now. That was probably first proposed in the late 90s, I think it was built in the mid, mid to early 2000s.
Early 2000s.
That's what you would know, I'm sorry, Greg knows that one intimately, was I pretty close?
Yep, 2000, we started.
And was there a shift in Heritage Towers? Is it still seniors, or are any of those like demographics shifted within originally designated?
Yeah, the Heritage or Wesley, what's called Wesley now, used to be called Heritage Towers. That is still a senior facility, kind of on the verge of independent assisted nursing facility. Center Square Towers started off as, I believe, senior apartments or apartments geared towards seniors, more, very independent seniors, but seniors.
But it's all age restricted.
Yeah, and that has now shifted, and I believe anyone can live in Center Square Towers. And they do have, you know, students, say, from Del Valle that are renting, and young people, and so it's more of a multi-generational facility now.
And then how many people are going to be in the one, sorry, because I wanted an idea of the numbers, how many are going to be in the one where the intelligence are building? What was that number?
I believe it's over 200 or thereabouts.
And then the building with the brewery is like 200 as well, correct?
150 to 180.
It was 150 to 180 in the township, plus whatever was going to be in the borough.
And that's all commercial type, and apparently the borough's okay with the commercial activity.
Right, one of their options though had residential on top of the commercial, they had two options for that when they presented to us.
So, yeah.
All right, so you've got roughly 1,000 people, and Lantern Hill, so you've got an easy 1,000 people coming up and down Broad Street. Fair?
Well, plus on top of that, there's a proposal for the old bon ton. Be converted into apartments, and that's in front of the borough, well, it's been in the press, I don't know where it is in terms of front of the borough.
I've heard they're denying it, so that's why it's a little, I don't, I was just curious, I was going to ask my next question, because I've heard that, and then I've heard, no, that's not true, but I don't, I haven't really paid attention.
I don't know if that's gone before them yet, but if it's in the paper as an option.
Just a concept, I don't necessarily know they've started any formal planning process.
Apartments above retail, is that what they're thinking, like that kind of thing?
Just integrate, yeah, some sort of integration, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, I was just trying to get an idea of numbers, thank you.
Okay, so we'll get that information in the next couple of days and go over that for Thursday.
There is one issue I wanted to bring up, I had really an outside kind of conflict of interest. Jason Duckworth, my former employer, who I certainly still have a little bit of a business relationship with, Marshall Brainerd, he's on the board of Arcadia. I've met Jason Duckworth maybe a month ago, prior to this being even brought in front of the township. I wanted to bring that up in case anybody felt that that was a conflict of interest, and I'd be happy to kind of step aside. It's kind of a, one of these things where I haven't worked for Griner Price Homes for over 10 years now, but I still have some involvement with the property that I jointly own with the Griner family. And Marshall Grainer sits on the board, so it's kind of like once-removed relationship, but nonetheless, it's there, I wanted to bring it up, I didn't want somebody to find out about it later.
Well, good, appreciate that, but I don't know if that's really, at this point, I don't know if that's such an issue, because we're just discussing options and, you know.
Oh, I understand, but I, I don't like.
We're losing your audio, Greg.
Yeah, I think Greg, at this point, you know, since they haven't submitted anything formal, if they do submit something formal, if everyone feels comfortable, we can, you know, run that by the solicitor and, you know, get sort of a, have him opine on whether or not we, he believes we're going to have a conflict interest going forward. If they actually, you know, do go through a land development, I mean, we're still in this sort of sketch kind of conceptual situation. But if they actually, you know, if this thing gets legs and they come in for some sort of formal reviews and everything, we can certainly run that by and make sure everybody's aware, and thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
You know.
All right.
Anything else on this subject? Anybody?
One thing I was going to ask is.
Greg, we lost your, your audio.
Your audio is very low, and it, it's, you know, I don't know if you're talking directly into your microphone now, or?
I'll turn it up, is that better?
Little bit.
Little bit, I'll lean closer.
Is there a paper in front of your microphone maybe?
No, it's not, I don't know what's going on. Check this out at some other time with the boundary lines. Where's the, where's the boundary lines with the township and the borough there? I know everything is on our side, is the zone, plain industrial, I'm looking at the zoning map, and it's hard to figure out where parcels are.
Okay, I can help you there. When you look at the plan, there's sort of like a rectangle at the front, and then it widens out and gets wider in the back.
Yes.
Where it widens out is where the property line is, and that's what like kind of goes across the other one that's next to it. So where it widens out, we have the wider chunk in the back.
In the back, and then to the, what's, to the west there, is, is that, where does the, where does the township line then kind of hit back to Broad Street?
The next property over, the Storm Lock, that's all.
Storm Lock, that's where it becomes part of the township.
That's all in the township, and if you stay on that side of the road, and you head towards the bypass or Settlers Drive in Sandy Ridge, that is all in the township. The other side of the road, the opposite side of the road going east would all be in the borough.
In the borough, correct, okay, I just didn't know where on our side, we're jogging in and out.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's not a clean kind of break there, if you will. It's a, it's a jog.
All right, thank you.
Are there any properties like this that we should like research or drive by, or that would be a good point of reference for this conversation going into Thursday?
You mean like the type of building they're proposing, that type of thing?
Uniqueness of like a dual township borough.
The campus, there's another one.
Yeah, Del Valle, Del Valle Campus is split between Doylestown Township and New Britton Borough. And it is split on a very crazy angle, if you will, in the, in such a way that the football, Judy, correct me, or Ted, step in here, Tom. The, the line runs like kind of through part of the football field and comes across, and so we have certain buildings that, we even have a dorm that's like split between borough and township, oh yeah. So it comes at a strange angle, it really does.
Yeah, right through there, and then, I mean, we, our line is straight along.
Judy, we just.
On Memorial Drive, like where the YMCA, and then the, the fields, known as the cow pasture, but that splits the Central Bucks property. So the Central Bucks property is in the borough and in the township. And then War Memorial, it's Central Bucks School District and War Memorial Field, but then the chunk in the township is similar.
Are there any big considerations that, from our, the traffic study is probably more of a word for the borough, but from a township lens, is there any big considerations that we should kind of have at the forefront of our head going into Thursday's conversation?
Well, part of it is the density, you know, that they're proposing, you know, as far as apartments, and it's a, it's a, I think a four-story building they're proposing, so.
And it looks like an water treatment, right?
I'm sorry, what?
Doesn't the back of the building he proposed look like the view would be into a?
Yeah, it's not very attractive.
Yeah, the Harvey Avenue Waste Water Treatment Center.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in Del Valle Borough, just so everybody knows.
It was?
And I'll, and I'll throw something out, you guys will like this one, because, so the borough's Harvey Avenue property, okay, goes from basically Doyle or Harvey Avenue there, and I don't know if anybody remembers, and I almost completely forgot, because it's all wooded and everything, comes all the way out to Shady Retreat Road.
Yep.
The Texas Eastern Pipeline, they are proposing a three-lot subdivision, which will really end up looking like it's in Doylestown Township. Here's a good, it's sort of the reverse, if you will, Jill. They're, and they own it, and they're going to propose subdividing that, and they, they haven't quite started the process yet internally, but it's a three, it's, you know, it's a three-lot subdivision, I think they have some sort of residential on it, but they'll access it most likely from Shady Retreat Road, not have you run all the way through their sewer treatment plant and everything. You've got the Texas Eastern Pipeline that comes through in the back there, and it's funny, because the IU property is there, and for some reason, I guess, I just assumed it was always the IU, it's this weird kind of shape when you look at it on our maps, right Sinclair? And so it kind of looks like it's jutting almost in the township, but it, it's, yeah, so they're going to subdivide that, they're going to use the funds for their, huh?
Does it have street frontage on Shady Retreat?
Yep, it has street frontage on Shady Retreat Road. You know.
We were looking at putting a trail through there one time years ago, as a connector, never went anywhere. You know, the one thing that we need to keep in mind on this too is that it requires a zoning change, and that's a legislative part of the township that does that, so the townships in the driver's seat, there's, there's nothing here that mandates whether we have to do it, or like we do under the subdivision of land development ordinance or zoning. The thing that I'm concerned about is there's such a rush to build these things, and there's not a, there's a limit to what the demand is. Nobody said what that is, but there obviously is, and I'm concerned that if we move ahead with something like this, we're missing opportunities to do it where we know we need this type of development, and that's in the failing shopping centers. So I'm a little concerned about the ramifications for making a zoning change, and the impact it might have on, on the county's property, on the shopping center properties. So that's how I'm looking at it. I'm not in a rush to jump on a bandwagon of putting that type of density in areas that aren't zoned for it right now.
Yeah, it doesn't seem very attractive to me at all.
My other question is, what if there was like a fire? Because we're talking density, and all I can thinking is, well, it's the township has to go, like, how, like, how even the police have to go, like, you know, how does that all work? Because it's, you're overlapping, is that, is there any?
No.
Doylestown Fire Company serves both, Doylestown Fire Company serves both the borough and the township, so they'll respond regardless. Police, you know, front area would probably be the borough, we have mutual aid, could be either one. Back area, if they have to deal with someone, may probably call the township, or it might be either one, I mean, the police are right there, so mutually, they may both respond in a sense. Or radio to each other and figure out who's closer and easier to, you know, respond, but fire, they serve, you know.
Everybody.
Everybody, so I'm not as worried there, and obviously through, and through the land development process, I know that if it gets to that point, access, whether they have some sort of emergency ass, access, possibly through the back on Harvey Ave, or through the neighbor's property next door, or something, I mean, that can be addressed, access, also their access out front could be bigger and wider, you know, to the site. But I think before we're there, you know, there's a lot of hoops to kind of jump through before we get there, but good, good ideas and concerns.
There are some of these being built, especially down around Fort Washington right now, the exact same design, with an internal parking garage with each floor access, and, and they seem to be immensely popular. Somebody in our office just moved into one of them, and it's, it's definitely a luxury apartment.
And Westrim is building the same concept, they just finished one in Lansdale, and they have a proposal in Montgomery, but they've been doing a lot of them too. And after the last meeting, Evan Stone sent in some information, I did too, the planning articles calling them Texas Donuts, and I think they were distributed to everyone, right?
I don't know, I don't think so, because I didn't know if that was just you guys going back and forth on.
We were geeking out over zoning, it might be fun for everyone.
Landscape architects were totally, yeah.
We were geeking out, but I think they might be good articles for the group, if you could include them in the information, Stephanie.
Yeah, sure.
You know, read it if you want to, it was interesting.
Yeah, and it's funny, because I was in, last time I was down in Nashville visiting a friend, her daughter lives in an apartment complex, and we went in, and I didn't realize from the parking garage, like, we came out and we were right on like her floor, you know, we didn't have to like take an elevator up, it wasn't separate. And I didn't realize it until they started talking about it, like, oh, that's what I, you know, I'm like, oh, this is very convenient, you know, but it was also Nashville, so, bigger city.
Yeah. Well, it's not a bad concept, it's just there's not much space there, so.
And I mean, one of the things I think that we're so used to is open space with any development.
And there is none on that site.
Yeah, there are very little open space being proposed, and they're trying to use the proposed park to, to be the, the open space.
Yeah.
Well, it really is something totally different from any of our area and dimensional requirements and density. It's, it's current proposals like 50 dwelling units per acre, which, you know, if that's something the township wants, we can make it work, we just need to know what the township wants. It's like almost, it's very, very high on the impervious, the only part that's not being built on would be his regulated wetlands and what he needs for storm if he's doing anything for storm.
What percentage impervious did they say they were going to use? I don't remember them saying anything, I watched the presentation.
He, he didn't give a, he didn't give a percentage, but when he was sharing plans and talking earlier, he said basically, it's going to be all of the net buildable.
I mean, they didn't have any numbers, they weren't that far along, but they did, you know, what they showed us was, you know, very dense, I mean, it didn't have any open space.
What's generally allowed in the LI district right now? I mean, it's kind of got a curiosity, I didn't take a close look at that.
Let me just pull it up, give me a second.
Yeah, are you talking about types of uses or pervious? Uses and impervious, okay.
Good. Stephanie, do you know, just out of curiosity, it's obviously the borough's perspective, how they want to develop the borough, but I actually saw a friend of mine who's a business owner in town over the weekend, and they're worried with all the housing that there's going to be less opportunity for them, for their businesses, so if all the space is purely all living space, so it was interesting, that was sort of their take on it. And they're also really concerned about the parking meter rates keep going up higher and higher, so not that that's us specifically, but I just thought it was an interesting take on their concerns. You know, like I said, there was obviously a shift from retail to restaurants, now the restaurants are hurting, so, you know, I don't know what the breakout is, but just interesting.
Yeah, and I'm not sure where brewery slash, I guess it would be, I mean, and that's only the, he threw out that as an idea of retailer brewery and restaurant. So, you know, I don't think the, my, my informal conversations with borough is, you know, that I don't think they have too much of a concern about the commercial aspect, but they too are concerned about the residential aspect of such a high density. So.
Maybe we could get that, that Penn's bowling dining place and Judy that I told you about at the Georgetown.
Yeah, I think you should pitch it to Jason.
Yeah.
What did you find at the meeting?
What'd you find?
All right, in LI, Greg, you want me to go through the uses first?
Just the major uses in that district.
Okay, like agriculture, panel, commercial school, recreation facility, athletic facility, daycare, municipal slash government building, office, medical office, automotive body and repair shop, utility operating facility, emergency services, manufacturing, research, mini warehouse, printing, contract trades, fuel storage, building materials sale, equipment storage, truck terminal, food processing, laundry, dry cleaning or dyeing plant, warehouse, medical marijuana, grower slash processor, outside storage, wind energy, and then by special exception, you can have communications towers, recycling facility and junkyard.
What seems?
And fireworks sale by conditional use. The area in bulk requirement is three acres, 200 foot lot width, and just, like, he has just about three acres on that, I believe. Maximum pervious is 40% of net buildable. Maximum building height 35, and the yards 100 foot 50 and 50, so he would need, well, this would be a, wouldn't he really? It would be a zoning amendment, and I don't think any of his, except for possibly the lot area, would comply with any of our area and bulk requirements in the LI, but again, it would be something new, new animal.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
What all the different uses are in there.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, the junkyard scares, would scare anyone, but again, it's next to a wastewater treatment plant. And the thing to remember as we're going through this, it is in the township, and, and, you know, we, we are the township. To the outside world, it seems like it's part of the borough. That shouldn't change how you feel about it, that should just be part of the perspective of how you look at it.
Sorry. Puppies driving crazy. All right, anything else on that one before Thursday? Shall we move on to the, we have these, these couple of saldo and zoning amendments, and they were basically a lot, a lot of stuff that we had gone over before, but does anybody have any corrections, comments, or anything on those? Because this was all pretty much stuff that we had done before.
Did Jeff make any changes on them since we saw them last time? I didn't see any, but.
No, he didn't, and we did check to make sure there was nothing changed, and, you know, looked at, you know, the sections and dotted the i's and crossed the t's, and they were all correct.
Then I move, we recommend approval of the two ordinances to the Board of Supervisors, as advertised.
I'd second that.
Great, okay, all in favor?
I.
Good. All right, I guess that's really it, unless anybody has anything else to discuss, any, any other items coming up?
What's our next step on the shopping center county property? We listened to the county, we met with the developers once.
Yeah, the county is putting together an RFI, Requests for Innovation.
Now, are we going to get to see that?
Yes, they're supposed to send it to us before they put it out anywhere, so that you can see what their RFI is.
Because I think it would be not a good thing to give false expectations on that without some limits on it, in terms of zoning in particular. And from that presentation, it sounds like the county is just, it's a fishing expedition right now.
Yeah, I don't think they have any real direction.
And I think our role should And I think our role should be one of maybe focusing that a little more than what the county had in mind too. So I I I think it could take a while to get through. The preparation of that and get consensus from the board of supervisors on it even as to what. What that focus should be, because otherwise you're wasting a lot of people's times and. There are a lot of people's time on that in terms of the developers preparing things and.
Well, I'd be curious what kind of response they get from an RFI if it isn't well put together.
Well, that's the problem. If it's not well put together, you you're going to get all sorts of things.
Yeah, or nothing.
No, you'll get something guaranteed. I mean, that's, there aren't too many pieces of ground like that around right now.
Stephanie, are you hearing any murmurings of anything or Judy?
No.
COVID may impact things anyway, so, yeah.
But Nancy, your ideas for the recreation ideas for that, you know, is something that we should look at a little further.
Yeah, it is very excited about it, but it's, there's such a huge need and. The, Jol, yeah, and the amount of. We have such incredible attractions between our parks and even, you know. Locations in the town, in the borough, like and the restaurants, it could be really something dynamite. It's sort of crazy. We don't have it and nobody does around us.
Did the county ever share their master plan for any manner with us? The last one they prepared, which was probably ten years ago now. Stephanie, did you?
They haven't given us anything since then.
I kind of expected to see them at least show that. Okay, I I think that's something we ought to ask them for. Maybe maybe it's a moot point with the new board and everything, but I.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, yeah, Judy, Tom, that's like ten. I mean, that was the last time we saw it. I mean, the last time.
It's closer to fifteen years even. I think it's older.
Well, they they'd gone through a couple iterations of it and the last one. They really didn't involve the township in it, I don't think. I remember the first iteration where they came in and made presentations to us.
Well, because we asked them to.
Yeah, and the last one.
They didn't have one. Yeah, they just keep coming in with, you know. I mean, you know. Mostly what they're doing is is little buildings here and, you know, they need space, they get grants. You know, but the, you know, this is a big space for them and I think they're going more to. Remote operations and stuff. I mean, they're finding that, you know, that their staff can work from home more. And so they can, I think, you know, begin to think about. Not needing some of the larger spaces that they, buildings, older buildings that they have and. You know, what what do they do with with that space? You know?
Right.
Well, I certainly think we can ask them for a copy of their master plan, you know, and see what that looks like, but. It probably is fairly moot right now.
I have a feeling that they're going to say that that master plan no longer applies because it's a it's a new. Board of Commissioners and actually new planning commission people too, even it's really different.
Well, I think it, the importance of the master plan there is how they, what they deal with the. The different facilities on site that they keep expanding. And how they integrate those together. They just haven't done that. And we had to fight with them to get a. A trail back to. What was it? The women's detention facility and the work release facility years ago. And they did such a poor job of it, it actually collapsed. And and those are the kind of things in a master plan, particularly with the recreation, since the township. Has at least with them for a significant area back there. And what are their plans for the area between that and these, this property that they're talking about right now? Not, I don't.
Nothing. I mean, outside of the trail that they have the grant for to come off six and come to Turk Park and go into Warrington Township. They don't have. I mean, there's, it would just continue to be open space. We would, we have a twenty-five year lease on it.
Because it might be an opportunity to, I mean, if you're looking for recreational land, particularly in. Field sports, that's the area to keep looking at because the area up front has a lot of slope to it. It would be expensive to develop. So it might be an opportunity for us to negotiate with the county too. I'm sure they're not looking at it that way, but I think.
I think.
We should decide what we want to do out there and and throw that into the pot.
Thank you, Tom. We missed you last time.
You know, you know what I was doing and Stephanie knows this about me, because I missed another meeting with her years ago. I was out plowing snow. And you put me on the tractor with snow in front of me. I just forget what's going on in the world. Remember that meeting I missed with you?
Yes, yes. Oh, yeah, yes, yes. I I made my, swam my way through mountains of snow. That there and, yeah, we're.
And I'm out plowing snow, so.
In your zone.
But you didn't come to my house. I still had to shovel. Just kidding, just kidding.
Oh, I I could be there in a minute, just.
Careful, yes, for their stuff.
Hey, please come.
Well, I I think, I think we should take our time with that RFI that they want to do and. And and get get our needs together part of it.
And and I tried to explain to Evan that, you know, when our planning commission has an opportunity to work with a property owner on. You know, something that's significant, we like to roll up our sleeves. We like to take our time. We like to review all aspects. And, you know, make sure that we're looking at it holistically. And, you know, it's sort of down to the granular level and really make sure that whatever is. Kind of finalized is best for not only the property owner, but also for the township as a whole.
And it's, you know, I remember dealing with cementites for a client of ours. We're trying to acquire a piece of ground for a treatment plant and we. We met with them, asked to buy the property and they just looked at us and they said. We don't know how to sell property. We've never sold property. They only acquire it and the county is sort of like that. So this is kind of new for them too. They don't sell many properties. They own a lot, but and for good reason, it's. You know, it's a key facility and if they had to go build something, finding new property to do that. You just can't do it these days.
Stephanie, will you share the comprehensive park plan with planning so they can see? Since Tom took such a nice interest in my, and Jill took a nice interest in my my sports passion.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Thank you. It's good demographics and identifies needs. It's 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 really comprehensive, a great study.
I do really like the idea of the request for innovation if that works. I just don't know how many people will actually respond to it because it helps make sure that we are. Pushing our own thinking by people who might bring ideas that we hadn't even thought about. So I'm optimistic that that concept. Will deliver some interesting dialogue. But I also don't know how practical people are in actually responding to those.
Well, I agree. I think it's a, I mean, the concept of it is great, but when they, it depends on how they word it and how they they. Send it out, how much of a response you get, because if it's not set up well, it. It's too nebulous. You know, and people don't know what to do with it. You know, they they were talking about, oh, it's a good, you know, thing for college students to react to and. Yeah, it's the kind of project to get, but you know, what we really want is is something. You know, a little bit more tangible than that.
What about the the Pennsylvania like economic development? Like I've seen things up at Lehigh area. You know, like I'm seeing these very cool innovative ideas, exactly what Jill's talking about, so. Yeah, I just don't know how they get, you attract them to your particular community, you know, like I said, I'm. I think of, you know, the three big employers. We've got education, the hospital, you know. And the school district, but that biotech center, like I said, I know they're over there, but, you know, I think maybe more the medical area. I know, we talked about boutique hotels, or not hotels, hospitals, sorry, you know, facilities as well, Tom, last time, so.
Like affiliated with actually sort of. Semi affiliated with Lehigh up in Lower Saka and Bethlehem Township area in city Bethlehem. They have like innovation areas, the Ben Franklin Learning Center, and then they have. Areas for sort of startup STEM companies. And they get some subsidies and they get some grants and then they get bigger and get more employees and move out farther. And new people come in and take that space. Like not like a biotech center, but really they're calling them innovation centers to 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 keep the. Young academic talent in the region for for Lehigh Lafayette.
So a lot of, just south of this property, there's a lot of small. Chemical engineering and pharmaceutical companies that are located in that office park behind there. And I never even knew it existed. It's kind of behind the hotel that's over there on on.
On Kelly.
Of a Kelly.
Yeah, of a Kelly. And it's, you know, there's some really, I mean, I I've done a little bit of work for. One chemical engineering firm that's back there and I was amazed at, you know, the the kind of. I mean, it's not industrial. It's it's, you know, pharmaceuticals, it's small chemistry labs, those kind of things. Research and development that's going on in that area. They have some pretty, pretty neat things going on there. And I had no idea it was there.
Well, even when you look at the biotech center in Buckingham, that's on a few acres of ground. I mean, it's fairly. You know, obviously, it's a successful facility and growing, but it's still on a few acres. It's not on twenty acres or.
No, they don't need a lot of land.
No, that's the thing we're talking about.
They're, they're, you know, they're, they really are, you know, there's a whole bunch of them and they're very small, but they're. Pretty innovative stuff going on there and I had no idea, you know, we had all that in our community.
They also have relationships, the biotechs with the school district, so they actually created a educational program for. Our STEM students that have the opportunity to go over there. They started like a half day program to start research, but so. The district created a partnership with them as well.
That's terrific. All right, well, does anybody have any other comments or anything else? Presentation to do for the board of supervisors.
Greg was trying to say something.
It was Sinclair.
I was Sinclair, I'm sorry.
Oh Judy, I was just going to thank everybody for the work you did on the two cleanup ordinances. It makes a big difference to those of us. Who are using the codes every day and we look forward to the third one eventually making its way towards you as well, but yeah, thank you, everybody.
That's great.
Welcome.
Well, it's good to have you get involved with this, Sinclair. It's good to get your feedback always.
Well, remember, I'm just an observer here, but it is good fun watching you work. Thank you.
Your checklist are good and you're the one enforcing the code, so your lists are very valuable. When you have an issue, we need to work through them.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Does anybody have any thoughts of other things that they, you know, is pressing on their mind for this year? That we should concentrate on or dive into other than what we've just been talking about?
I think you're gonna see sixty meeting house come in soon. I, their engineer sent me an email. Asked how he drops his plans off, so. You know, I'm like. Lock in the door.
They said they were bound to be here for the February planning commission meeting. That was their goal.
That was their goal. I think they're gonna meet it, so they're gonna be coming soon.
Is there anything new on Grosso?
No, nothing.
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 Well, one of the things that came up.
That was approved last year, so, but no, no land development yet.
Well, one of the things that that came up kind of started from sixty meeting house. Was the the EHC committee, the environmental folks are. I think, you know, a little bit at odds with with us and the bike and hike and. You know, I I think one of the things that I'd like to see happen is us have a little better conversations with them. As far as what their goals are and and hopefully we're not at odds with each other, because I think right now. We are. I had reached out a little bit to them about sixty meeting house to see. You know, that open space portion of that project and what their thoughts were for that and they want. It to be planted as woods. They're adamant about that. That's something that they. They want to see any open space that we're able to acquire, that we should acquire it. And plant it and as woods, because they don't want to see these little pocket. Fields or, you know, things like that happen. So that was something that I, because I think what we were. Thinking was that we didn't really want to take that over as a township, that we wanted to see this, something that the HOA took care of. You know, and I think that's something that we need to talk about more for these projects. Because if they do have a little leftover land and they want to just turn it over to us, you know, do we want that responsibility for these little? They're not contiguous, they're just, you know, little pockets here and there and, you know, my feeling is. That the township shouldn't really have to take on that responsibility. To upkeep a little portion of something that only is accessible to that particular development. So I just wanted to get everybody's thoughts on that and I think we have to kind of, you know, think about how we're going to handle that going forward because it's. Not a lot of them, but they do come up and, you know, I'm finding out that, you know, the. There's some opposition to what we were thinking. From the EHC.
Well, we really haven't had an opportunity to dig in on that yet too. I think that's something that'll, we ought to involve them during the review process.
Yeah.
We're not there yet. Sounds like we won't be.
Do we have any like data points, like a cost analysis of? Who, if we plant the trees, how much does it cost? Like how many do we put in? You know, what does that cost? And then, you know, you have properties, if it's a small, you get two neighbors that say, I'll just mow when I'm on my mower. Because they're happy to have another plate, a little bit more space when they have parties and the neighborhood gets together. That happens. I personally have a. Basin that they decided to let grow, but now it's not, it's. No one's ever come to clean it and make it look pretty. It's it's just looks like a woody mess. So there's a maintenance piece. Is someone going to come out and do that? Then it's, then we're paying our staff to come out and do that. Because it's, so I think there needs to be some data points or some some cost or financial analysis and then there's a little bit less. Like I love your idea, Judy, to really have this committees work together because we have so many strong volunteers and knowledge base. I think you're like right on that, but I also think having some, maybe some financial data points from a Stephanie that says if you're gonna have. These, you know, X number of hours we have to dedicate towards, you know, maintenance or whatever. We have a sense, so then there's. Real, real talking points, not with opinions. I don't know, Jen, maybe you have a thought about it, but.
Well, I think when it comes to these types of things, each property is going to be so different. It's going to be hard to generically say it's going to cost this much. I mean, you have something that with a lot of water issues, it's going to be more expensive to deal with, so. I don't know if we can come up with an average, but certainly when we're looking at property and whether we want to be responsible for it, we should have some sort of an idea how much it would cost.
I'm talking to general baselines, just baselines, so that people understand there is a financial. Impact to these things. That's it.
Right, and then we can make the analysis as to whether it's environmentally beneficial beyond the cost.
Typically, they'll they'll be, the developer will have to put together, if he's going to have an HOA. He's going to have to put together certain documents for that and one is the management of open space.
Right.
And there has to be numbers in there in terms of what he, what the HOA will have to collect to maintain. And and most importantly, the stormwater basins. I mean, if they're neglected, they become a problem for the township.
That's where I'm at now. That's why.
Yeah, and they they can be, they can cause problems offsite and onsite, so. I think what we need to do on this is dig in on that a little more during the planning process. Is to force them to give that a lot of thought. And push them in the direction of making it as cost effective and as foolproof to manage these little open space areas as possible.
Yeah, and. Yeah, I think.
Sometimes they think that's just mowing grass because.
And, you know, I think the the, and I I was talking to the developer after the EAC had said they wanted to have it be. Um, like in a wooded area and and planted and stuff like that. So. You know, he knows that's where the EAC is coming. And even though it's open space and owned by the HOA. There's no reason why they can't have a woodland slash planted area. And their HOA would have to be responsible, exactly what you're saying, Tom. Versus the township having to. You know, maintain another parcel that. You know, we have other areas that are woodlands and the ideas of the woodlands were to just sort of let them be woodlands.
Right. Something being woodlands, um, you you know, you end up with evasive species. There's there's a, you know, storm damage. And where trees come down, you know, that sort of thing. And. I mean, personally, for a little piece like that, I would think we would want to push them to make it part of their HOA rather than. Donated open space. Uh, because it really doesn't do much for us, but we can also request that. It's planted and wooded to go with what the EA- EAC would like to see.
Can you give them options? Can you give them options like a meadow? Versus woods, like can you give them options or no?
Well, there's nothing in the ordinance that requires them to plan that. So I think it's a matter of negotiations at this point.
Right, the ordinance only requires that they state. What the open space will be used for and what it will be. They have to say, like, if it's going to be a meadow. They have to say that it's going to be a meadow and have a plan for the meadow and a plan for the maintenance of the open space. So whatever they have, they have to have a plan for the maintenance.
Right, but we can't direct what that shall be.
Correct.
Yeah, that's we could, we can negotiate.
Right, yeah, we can ask, you know.
I say guide, yes, guide them and suggest.
Advisory board.
Yeah, but Nancy, when it comes down to it, we can certainly help out with, you know, some. Some issues for the planning commission and the board to think about when evaluating them and it's. So we we can help you with costs and as Jen pointed out. Each piece will be unique. There might be one piece where it's a little piece of open space, but it's contiguous to the Nishamity Greenway, for instance. Right, so that little piece. Adds to, you know, hundreds and hundreds of acres or a little piece that's surrounded by industrial wouldn't do anything. So. Not all little pieces are equal, even if they might have the same environmental attributes, but we can. We can help. With the issues that would be salient for each one.
Perfect.
And there's no land, I I don't know what the Heritage Conservancy's practices are at this moment in terms of wanting more land underneath the Heritage Conservancy brand or Montgomery's Land Trust. Do those, those types of nonprofits, are they seeking little parcels and?
They're seeking parcels if you'll give them an annulment.
Right, they don't, they don't take anything without the donation of the endowment to pay for the. Maintenance and the inspections and maintaining that. Um, easement.
And they want something that's linked to something else, you know, that's contiguous in some way. And this was, this is an isolated pocket, so. I I can't imagine they'd be interested in that.
No, they they take, they're, they took the land at Pendot, right? In the borough.
They they took that to negotiate the.
I mean, they'll take almost anything if you give them enough money.
Yeah, they were hoping to hold that for a year or two and twenty years later, the sale went through.
Yeah.
Could those developments make like mini parks within their development?
Yeah.
They could, and that was, that was actually a suggestion that um, Stephanie floated early on, but I I was was there also. And the Park and Rec Board didn't want to park there.
But who's, who's decision is that? I mean.
I mean, it.
It was.
Typically, what they do with these small ones is just put in a neighborhood. Sort of park, the HOA owns it.
Right.
For the people in their community primarily and and they're great ideas because it's a good opportunity for young families to get together and. Share. You know.
Well, it's certainly their property values.
Yeah.
Mm hmm. In in this one though. In in this one case, just up the street from it, sort of like halfway between that development and my house. Is the Mennonite church who just put in a new playground area and they have a pavilion and they offer their open fields for informal soccer and play and. That that's functioning as a neighborhood park for our little region right now. At at no cost to the township or the residents. And they've been very generous.
For now.
For now, but. And in exchange, they have their Monday night concerts in the sun, in the summer, which I've never complained about, but apparently a couple of my neighbors have.
All right, well, I, is there any other issues um? That we want to. Make sure that we're dealing with going forward. This year.
Judy, one of the things that we had started a couple of years ago was the Green Points. Um, ordinance where we're giving benefit to people who are using green practices. And I don't know if Sinclair has any update, but last I heard, nobody's using it. So, so I was wondering if. We could have everybody kind of think about maybe the ordinance needs to be changed or promoted or. Maybe it's just not hitting that spot where people want to use it. And uh, so I'd I'd like to have it be functional if at all possible.
I I heard some feedback from one or two builders, um, mostly like. Home and office. Type people. Um, that it wasn't enough. Discount on the cost of the building permit. To make it worthwhile doing it and to go through the administrative process and basically. People are doing things on their own, but it's not worth the administrative. Blank. To. To comply with it because just. Their, what their perception was, the paperwork and all that was too much of a hassle to have someone looking over their shoulder to get. So little return on their building permit that they're doing stuff on their own. And each one of them, there were three different ones. Each mentioned to me, like listed all the things they're doing to make their buildings more sustainable and green. Basically, they're they're telling me they didn't need the ordinance. But if if we wanted the ordinance to be more. Used, it would have to offer more benefit.
Well, because I I, when the car dealerships came in, for example, I was really. You know, love to see some solar shading of those parking lots and, you know, do do some other things there. And they, you know, that just didn't go anywhere. They weren't interested in that. It wasn't enough of an incentive. So I think, you know, that's, that's the only way we can really get that to fly.
Right, I think. Yeah, Judy and Jen, last year, I think we just had three applications, but they were all residential.
Okay. I'll take it.
What about um, charging stations? Are are you seeing it? Is that something we should think about in our parks or? Maybe when you you talk about, it's something we should kind of incent. Even from like a shop, the shopping center or something because we are seeing more and more hybrid. I mean, that's becoming more common now. Before it was, I remember it was a big deal when the Borough put one in, so. Has a township that does that at all?
Yeah, I think we have, right? EAC, it's actually, we have spots available in the back if we ever do something with the fleet. We did that as part of our building. Um, we're looking into some grants, but also we, the E, this is something the EAC is kind of adopting. And we're going to be talking to them about, um, one of their members is promoting it. We're going to be talking to them about the practicality of. Where to have it and the use of it. I mean, the, you know, the borough's doing it for free. They have it available. Um, they don't charge anybody for it, so. Um, so we, the parks are not necessarily set up for it, um, for in terms of having the appropriate conduits. Um, out there. So in the um, wattage or whatever, basically, that would be able to be um, used. So we would have to do some. Um, improvements. For that. And the question would be, how long do, you know, how long does someone come and utilize it and? And everything like that. So that's, you know.
Well, it is a requirement for like shopping centers and commercial developments, new commercial developments and shopping centers. Um, it it might be something that we want to write in for. Um, apartments, you know, anything with a parking deck or a parking lot. Um, you know, should have so many spaces allocated, just like we have ADA spaces. They are required to have charging stations as well.
Yeah, I think that was something for um, that uh, Grasso is gonna have to have.
Yeah, for that commercial development.
Planning or in the discussion for the stipulation. And we require that they will have to have an EV charging station added. In their process.
Yeah, one, one thing to bear in mind with charging stations is. Um, if there are required number of parking spaces for a particular use. You need to be careful that if so many spots are taken up with charging stations, it doesn't become like a business on its own. Where people are just going there to charge and taking up the required parking spaces for the businesses roundabout. That's just one thing to think about.
Yeah, I heard anecdotally from the um, one of the borough officials that the spot in the Hamilton Street, not Hamilton Street. Um, Pine Street Parking Lot near Pine State. Seems to be used by someone working in town who comes every day and charges their vehicle. Which, you know, makes sense. And then also, um, I heard that the new Tesla or the new Wawa on South Main Street. Tesla has an agreement with Wawa and they're providing Tesla charging stations, but they're not interchangeable to other vehicles, apparently.
Oh, they're not?
That's terrible.
I thought they were. I thought they were universal.
Apparently, apparently they're not.
That's awful.
Judy uh, will remember from conversations with me too. I'm not altogether um.
I.
Fooled by. Electric charging or solar or whatever, because if the electricity is generated by some coal or gas power plant out west somewhere. There's no benefit to having an electric vehicle. You can't guarantee that it's clean energy that's being used, so. Uh, unless somebody can prove to me that it's being produced by solar or wind.
Well, and I I have, I have a friend who's a landscape architect and planner in in Chester Springs, Ed Thirkoff, who has a. Charging station that's fueled by solar energy. That's just the rest of his farm.
That would be approved.
So he is, he is walking the walk, he's talking the talk and walking the walk, but he's the only one I know. We we had a. We had a theoretical discussion about eighteen months ago and. About six months ago, he showed me his documentation that he he actually did it.
But yeah, don't be fooled by an electric vehicle being uh. Eco-friendly.
But those, those parking lots that are at the car dealership certainly could generate an awful lot of electricity if they had solar shades.
Right.
That drives me crazy.
Just so Nancy, just so you know, three of our EAC members have electric cars.
Yeah.
So they're, they're really pushing that we have, you know. We, we make sure that we're starting to incorporate it somehow, so.
Or to have something in the park. It it would be neat if if the township, you know, could afford it, had charging stations in the park. I think that would make a lot of sense. People come to an event and.
There's a grant, I think, comes out around September time for that. Actually, I think that's what the Borough used for their charging stations was a, was a state grant.
I think I have some information on that in my office.
Yeah, it also has, the the Bucks TMA has some information too. So Erin's looking, I have my new special projects coordinator looking into that for us.
Good. Okay, anything else? Right, I guess we can adjourn for the evening then, if that's everything. That's all I have.
Enjoy your puppy, Judy.
Oh, yeah. Now he's all, now he's asleep, but he was getting into trouble. That's why I was leaving though. I was like, what are you doing? He thinks he can chew on computer wires, you know?
Ouch.
I know, I know.
If you need a babysitter, let me know.
He's very cute.
Adorable? Oh, yes, everyone has their little quarantine pups with them and like when people are home for meetings and I don't have any pets because I'm living with Mr. Allergic.
Well, I got this guy, he's half poodle, so hopefully he's. More hypoallergenic, doesn't shed as much, we'll see.
Yeah, my sister just got her second schnoodle. They they don't, um, it's mixed between a schnauzer and a poodle and they don't shed.
Well, this is a Brittany and a poodle, so it's, you know, because I've always had Britneys, so. We'll see, but it's not really an official, you know, breed yet. And very good.
Okay.
Well, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Next time we want to see you, Greg.
See you soon.
Bye.